Sorry about that. I didn't mean to startle everybody. You enjoy it.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Here.
Councilmember Sperry?
Here.
Councilmember Herbig?
Here.
Councilmember Danuski?
Here.
Councilmember Curtis?
Excused.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Thank you.
If you'll please rise and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, united, nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This was a little housekeeping here. We came out of executive session and that part's adjourned and no action is taken. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. If there are no objections, the agenda will stand approved as written.
Your honor, I am recommending another executive session at the end of the council meeting.
All right, so we have an executive session added to the end of the meeting.
Under potential litigation.
Potential litigation. And then if there's no objections, the agenda will stand as modified. Next item on the agenda is a presentation, an energy assessment program from Puget Sound Energy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're pleased tonight to have a brief presentation from Puget Sound Energy. Mark Cammerer is here to tell us about their recent direct business install for small businesses that PSE accomplished last month?
Yeah.
Last month. So he has a presentation to show you.
Very good. So can everybody see the presentation? Okay, well, thank you for having me. Again, my name is Mark Cammerer from Puget Sound Energy. I manage our community outreach in King County. And so I know that I came a few weeks ago to give a pre-presentation about our small business direct install program. But this is the good part. I get to actually talk about the results that occurred as a result of this campaign. So we'll kind of go through it. This is the part that I told you about when I came first, which is really what is this program that we're offering to the business community in the city of Kenmore. And so it's a small business program that's targeted at businesses of 10,000 square feet or less, although we're able to serve businesses that are a little bit larger than that. We're just not trying to serve Costco warehouses or anything like that with this program. But it is mainly a lighting program where we offer LED lighting. We will swap out inefficient lighting with more efficient technology. But there's other measures that we offer through this program, like occupancy sensors, some refrigeration measures for restaurants. So we had a restaurant expert with us out in the field, and she was able to go to all of the restaurants in the city to talk about their refrigeration. And then we do water savings, something that we've never tried before. And we did this time was the Kenmore Brighter City Block Party that we held down at the 192 Brewery, which was very well attended. And I'll tell you more about that when we get to it. But this is the team from PSE and our contractors who actually do the installation. So we were here. We were here from the 13th through the 15th of last month, and originally targeting probably about 50 businesses, although we ended up serving more than that. And we couldn't have done it without the participation of the city. So it was really nice to have Mayor Baker on some of the materials that we were using to promote the event. It provides a degree of legitimacy in the eyes of the business owner to actually want to participate. So this was instrumental. So thank you again. And then I've just got some photos of kind of what we do when we're out there. You can see in the top right, we're actually doing some assessments of those businesses and talking with business owners on the bottom, and then actually doing the installations. You can see there. This is a photo from the Block Party that we held at the brewery. And so we had this cash cube. It was really fun. I didn't see one person coming out of there not smiling. So they were able to go in and try and collect enough tickets. And then however many they had, they were able to cash that in for either light bulbs or showerheads. It was a really great time. And then, you know, obviously, once again, reinforcing the idea that we partnered very well with the city. I was really pleased how well received we were by the business community. I don't think we had anybody yell at us to go away, since we're trying to offer them these replacements. And it is a free program for the business owners. So there's really not a downside for them. In many cases, we're able to offer hundreds or even thousands of dollars worth of equipment for free, all the labor's included. So it's a fantastic program. And we're not able to offer it everywhere. So it was really nice to partner with Kenmore and be able to offer this. This was our third and final blitz of the year. So this was just a really great way to wrap it up. Let's look at the results. So the Block Party first. Even though there was some sort of horrible accident on 522 that prevented a lot of people from making it who wanted to be there, we had over 300 people show up. Or actually, I think we were right at 300, which was our goal. So we met the goal. Phillips was nice enough to donate 500 LED bulbs. 350 of them were given away. So everybody got a bulb on their way out the door. We were able to sign up 61 folks for our Home Print Assessment, which is a free residential energy audit program. 59 people won a free showerhead in that shower booth that I showed you the photo of. And then we were selling energy efficiency kits. So that was a kit that contained six LEDs and a showerhead for $10. That's our most heavily rebated item that we offer to customers. So it's a really great price. And then we had, yeah, 10 folks sign up for our green power program. As far as the business community and the direct installs, we audited 69 businesses and identified almost 3,400 individual measures that we were able to replace, which generated almost 300,000 kilowatt hours of electric savings. This is a significant number for 69 businesses. In addition, 421 terms of gas savings. And then the big number at the bottom, we spent over $100,000 on these rebates for customers just in three days. So it was fantastic. If you average that out, and this isn't a totally fair number, because some businesses have more opportunity and some have less. But if you do just look at the average, we're looking at about 4,300 kilowatt hours of savings per customer per year, saving them about $387, which is, that's a chunk of change for a small business owner. So I mean, that's really what we're out here doing. I like to do this also, because kilowatt hours are sort of amorphous and don't mean a lot to a lot of people. But I mean, looking at the carbon impact of what we were able to do, what the city of Kenmore was able to do in these business owners, you can see the numbers. It really scales up quickly. Taking 43 cars off the road, diverting about 74 tons of landfill waste, or not burning about 23,250 gallons of gasoline. And then one other number, oh yeah, so that's all based on 307 metric tons of CO2. That was the big number of savings. But this is much more tangible and really demonstrates, you know, what we can do when we're all working together to try to create a more efficient energy system. So that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And if you'd like the slide deck, I can definitely send that as well.
Questions?
Any?
Yes, we're sure.
Well, the first is, thank you very much. And yes, I think that if we could have the presentation added to our agenda, I think that this would be of interest to the citizens.
I'd be happy to do that.
So one question that I did have for the businesses that did participate and have this wonderful, you know, opportunity to save energy, do they get any kind of, I don't know how to say it, a sticker, a label, or something that says that, you know, they've become more energy efficient? I know sometimes people, especially the patrons, appreciate seeing that in a business.
Yeah. No, that's an excellent question. We did distribute like a window cling for every business that participated.
Oh, okay.
And then in addition, we'll go around and do a thank you walk. And they were able to indicate if they wanted like a certificate. So we'll be printing those up to show them, here's exactly how much energy you're saving as a result of participating in this program.
Oh, very good.
So they've got the cling. They'll have the plaque that they can frame and hang up on the wall if they want to. But yeah.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah. We found that business owners in particular really enjoy that kind of thing.
I'll just add a quick comment, and that is that PSE got in touch with our landlord that we leased the incubator space from. And so Rob and the mayor and I were over there a week or so ago. And you could really tell that the lights had been, the overhead lights had been switched out. I was shown the motion detector, the sensors in one of the restrooms by one of the company people at the incubator. And so it looks good. And it's really good to know that we're saving on energy costs.
That's great. Any other questions?
Yeah, sure. I just, Mark, thanks a lot for choosing Kenmore.
Of course.
And I think it's just a fantastic program. And I hope a lot of other communities get to enjoy the benefits we did. Thank you.
Yeah, we hope to continue providing this service, yeah.
I know we're taking advantage of that assessment on Thursday. So thank you. We're looking at energy.
Oh, good.
On Thursday, we have your people coming out. So thank you for that. Anything else? Thank you.
Thanks again. We really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
All right. Next item on the agenda is citizen comments. It's the opportunity for you to come forward and speak about any issues in the city that are concerning. And we ask you to please limit your comments to three minutes. And is there anybody wishing to be heard?
John Adamsky.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk. My name is John Adamsky. My address is 5906 Northeast Arrowhead Drive in Kenmore. My family and I have lived in Kenmore over 40 years. And I'm here to discuss a very serious problem relating to water quality in Lake Washington, and to recommend some specific actions that Kenmore can take to address the issue. Last year about this time, a toxic strain of blue-green algae appeared in Lake Washington for the first time in decades since the Metro Sewer Installation in the '60s reduced the influx of excess nutrients. The lake cleaned itself up, and we hadn't seen toxic algae for all of those years until last year about this time. In December of 2014, water samples from the Kenmore shoreline at Arrowhead were analyzed by the King County Environmental Laboratory and showed toxic levels of microcystin bacteria well above the safe limits set by the Washington Department of Health. Microcystin is a toxin that attacks the liver and has been responsible for serious illness in humans and the deaths of many pets and livestock. No illnesses have resulted from the Lake Washington outbreak, and the affected beaches are posted with warning signs provided by the Department of Health. The blue-green algae episode from last winter continued through the spring, and toxin level gradually increased over that time until a high reading of 400 micrograms per liter was measured in June. That's about 70 times the DOH safe limit guideline. This year, we've seen over 500 micrograms per liter already. If last year is an example of what comes next, this is going to be much worse. It's a serious problem. The state agencies and the county agencies are all well aware of the situation. We have a big email train going. But so far, the algae outbreak is an unsolved mystery. Kenmore City Management has been involved in the discussions, and they are actively pursuing grant money to begin development of an integrated management plan for the control of aquatic vegetation. I would like to enthusiastically applaud that effort. Kenmore has also added language to the comprehensive plan supporting efforts to clean up the aquatic weeds and to work with King County to manage the issues in the Smamish River, and I applaud that as well. I'd like to recommend two additional actions that I believe can help address this emergent toxic algae issue. First, I'd like to ask that the council consider adding language to the legislative priorities list to support funding to help assess and understand the causes of the algae outbreak and to develop a plan to manage the algae. This might include funding for the Kenmore grant application in progress and funding for Kenmore to establish an in-house task force to address water quality and aquatic vegetation issues. Second, I would like to ask the council consider adding funding to the city budget that's under consideration tonight for water quality. This might include staff support and perhaps some additional financial account for consultant support, either from expert consultants that might be available through King County, the folks that might be retired, for example, from King County, or from some of the experts in the treatment corporations that are around the Northwest. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Adamsky.
There's no one else signed up.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Mr. Carlinzey? Any comments or thoughts on the potential of adding this to that second page of our?
No, I had not given that thought, but definitely worth considering. You know, what we could do is, if you want, we could think about some language to add to that and come back to you with some suggested language if that's what you're saying.
Because we haven't really formalized that agenda or the policy positions, right?
That's on for consent tonight.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. That's on your agenda, under consent agenda, to approve that tonight. But I wholeheartedly agree with Mr. Adamsky. It is a problem. We haven't been seeing the same bacteria levels or type of bacteria levels at Log Boom Park where we've been testing. But we have been seeing fecal chloroform levels that are pretty high. And we think, and the experts need to help us confirm this, but I think John and I both agree that the presence of aquatic weeds is a contributor to this algae. And from John's observations, it appears to be in higher concentrations where these aquatic weeds are. And the aquatic weeds do add to increasing the temperature of the water and things like that that make it conducive for the bacteria. So as Mr. Adamsky said, we are applying for a grant from the state to help us figure this out. And we're also looking into doing some herbicides on the aquatic weeds in certain areas up and down the Smamish River and also at some of the recreational spots on the lake. I'm learning as I'm going on this issue. I'm learning that herbicides actually can help with fish habitat, because these aquatic weeds, like I said earlier, can increase water temperature and make it difficult for fish navigation. And learning that this type of aquatic weed treatment isn't that hard to get a permit for and is actually quite common in other parts of this lake. So yeah, we're definitely looking at ways to address this. As far as aquatic weeds go, the Department of Ecology, their one possible concern or reluctance to give us grant money is that we're downstream from everything. And so we could do things to address things around Kenmore, but the seeds and all the aquatic weeds are just going to keep coming from upstream. And my point is, well, if you look at it, pretty much everything has an upstream. Even Redmond has an upstream. And so where do you stop? And so we're trying to figure all that out. But I appreciate Mr. Adamsky's efforts. He's done a lot to motivate us. You know, connecting with the water, access to the water is a priority of yours. And that's one reason why we are working on this is because this issue affects access to the water.
So I was thinking, yes, the legislative agenda is on there. I'm thinking that second page on the policy positions, if that's something that could be easily added to as we develop a position that we can then effectively call to legislators' attention.
Yeah, that's council's desire. We're happy to do that.
Can I, Mayor?
Yeah, please.
I have a question on that. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to get an idea of a kind of a linear process that you're thinking here. Excuse me. Adding it to the legislative agenda makes sense, but I think we need to be really clear about what we're trying to accomplish and who's going to accomplish it and what our role is going to be.
That's what I was thinking, the policy page.
Okay.
The second page.
Second page.
And we can come back to you with suggested language.
Okay.
Wonderful. Councilmember Sperry? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Adamsky. We appreciate your efforts on this matter. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I think we need to pull items C off of that formally.
Pull formally, pull items C off, okay.
Yeah, let staff play that.
Fine. So then that remains the consent agenda A and B. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved?
Yes.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor on the consent agenda, both A and B, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agendas A and B stand approved unanimously. Next item, then we'll go to C. Councilmember Herbig?
I'd move that maybe we table that until next week to give staff time to write up new language for the policy page and bring that back to us next week.
I see agreement there from the Assistant City Manager. Councilmember Danuski?
Is next week enough time to do that?
I think so.
All right. So there's a motion to table. All those in favor, say aye. Until next week. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm not a real expert on Robert's Rules, but when you table something, you have to vote to untable it, right?
Well, we gave it a date, next week, next Monday.
All right.
So it's really postponed.
Okay.
That's really what should be used.
Okay.
I mean, you're right about that. So the motion was to postpone until next Monday decision. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion stands to postpone stands approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda then is a public hearing to receive public testimony regarding 2015-2016 mid-biennial budget amendments and 2015 to 2020 capital improvement program amendments. Ms. Gregory?
Hit it. Thank you. Yep. You can hear me now. The microphone's on. Sorry about that. Good evening again. Tonight is the first of two public hearings that we'll be holding this month. Tonight, we're going to review the proposed amendments to the capital improvement program as well as the mid-biennium budget amendments. And next week, we'll have a public hearing that will present the recommendations for the 2016 property tax levy. I'd like to just note for any observers or audience that the agenda packet itself contains much more detail and supporting documents than they'll see on the presentation. And the presentation, the agenda packet and the slides are on the website for anyone's reference. So as you know, the RCW requirement of having a biennial budget is to conduct a mid-biennium review. And during our review, we take into consideration conditions where we may be experiencing better than expected city revenues or higher than expected expenditure budget trends. We also take into consideration emerging priorities and programs that were not foreseeable when we first prepared the 2015-16 budget. During the mid-biennial review, we also look back at past council actions and decisions that might have affected but not have been provided for in the budget. Two examples would be the first update of the capital improvement program that was modified in February of this year, which generated quite a lot of budget changes. And also modifying the budget for the town green pavilion project was approved in March and again needs adjustment due to the project bids. The main focus of the review as well as throughout the year is to make sure that none of the funds are headed into troubled waters and exceeding their legally adopted expenditure budgets. And particularly in the CIP, it's a good practice to keep the six-year plan up to date and the project budgets up to date along with the expected funding and to illustrate that we've included projects that we truly expect to accomplish and that we can fund or anticipate funding those projects in our six-year plan, especially when we are applying for specific grants. So we'll start with the capital improvement program of transportation. And at this time, we are only recommending two adjustments to the transportation capital improvement program. First is a new project which would be construction of a roundabout at 61st Avenue Northeast and Northeast 193rd Street. The proposed budget is $2,225,000, including sidewalks and bike provisions. We've applied for a TIB grant in the amount of $1.5 million, which is about 68% of the project budget. And we currently propose to show the match as funded by the city. But if awarded the grant, we'll apply to other agencies to help fund that match and to minimize the city's ultimate contribution. The other adjustment to the transportation CIP is to eliminate the city's $450,000 set aside for the West B portion of 522, until the funding allocation and the timing from the state can be adjusted, as you noticed in our legislative agenda. And also because we're going to strive to commit as little city money as possible to this portion of the project, considering our substantial funding of the 522 project in the past. So we'll have to revisit that when the funding comes together and is more certain. The next page is just a schedule that will roll into the CIP ordinance and exhibit of all the projects and all the funding that you'll see when I bring the ordinance back for adoption in two weeks. The changes are highlighted in light blue, the first one being a removal of the $450,000 in the West B project and the addition of the Roundabout project. And then some of the funding sources are highlighted in blue as well. Then moving into the Parks Capital Improvement Program, there are three projects with proposed increases in budgets due to the carryover of unspent funds from last year. And these are the Tolt Pipeline Project, the Log Boom Park Pedestrian Bridge, and the Squire's Landing Dock and Float. The carryovers and the newly adjusted budgets are noted on the slide. There's one proposed adjustment to a project, and that's the Morelands Park Project. We were awarded a $500,000 RCO grant. So due to that, we are moving the project one year closer than originally scheduled. So as I've noted, design permitting should commence in 2016, and construction is anticipated in 2017 rather than 2018. And the funding sources are shown on the right. And finally, in parks, there are two new proposed park projects. The first is $100,000 for developing a Squire's Landing concept, which would include considerations such as the manufactured home that's on the property and improved access and parking considerations. Funds from the recently awarded $340,000 RCO grant would be used to fund this effort. That grant was awarded to reimburse a portion of the purchase price of that property. So some of those proceeds are going back into that property to develop the concept. The second project is $100,000 for a Log Boom Park concept plan, developing configurations and options for the beach, the environmental impacts and mitigation and permitting. This would be funded with $50,000 from park impact fees and $50,000 from the Imagine Kenmore program in the Strategic Opportunities Fund. This is how those projects look on their CIP six-year plan. Changes are highlighted in green. And the last element of the capital improvement program is the surface water program. And I've just provided this for information. We are not proposing any changes or amendments to the surface water capital projects at this time. So at this point, that completes the capital improvement So at this point, that completes the capital improvement adjustments and recommendations. And we'll move into the general mid-biennial review of the rest of the funds. So the mid-biennial review of the general fund would be first, and these are the recommendations for adjustment that we are proposing. We have better-than-expected revenues trending in the sales tax area, the building permit revenue area, and the plan review and inspection fee revenue. So we propose to increase those budgets, $300,000 for sales tax, $130,000 for building permit, and $65,000 for plan review. On the expenditure side, we are proposing to provide $53,000 for professional services for Sound Transit III planning, $12,000 for the city's share of the mural project, $800,000 to go to the Town Green Pavilion project budget, $188,000 for West A, and then $1,180,000 to the Strategic Opportunity Fund to transfer the excess reserves from the general fund to that Strategic Opportunity Fund and bring the balance of the ending fund balance reserve down to about 24% of annual revenues, which is almost $2.5 million.
And if I could jump in here, the Strategic Opportunity Fund contribution from the general fund and also the Town Green Pavilion project, so that's coming up on $2 million. What we're seeing here is the general fund is once again contributing to capital. And in the good old days, that used to be pretty common where the general fund was contributing to capital. And then in the recession, we saw that ability for the general fund to contribute to capital almost go away, if not completely go away. And now we're seeing that ability coming back a little bit, which is really, really great and really encouraging. It's good to see the ability in the general fund and that flexibility to contribute to capital. I've told you, or some of you, if not all of you, in the past about this epic battle between operations and capital and the tendency is for operating costs to go up and squeeze out capital. And so we always have to fight back and try to keep our operating costs down so that we can still contribute to capital. And so it's been encouraging to see this ability for the general fund to contribute to capital come back.
Thank you. These next two slides are really just a recap of the changes to the other city funds. I'll walk through them briefly, not in detail, because all of the detail is in your agenda packet. And you'll see that many of the revenues and expenditures are inter-fund transfers, one fund sending money to another fund and the other fund getting that money from the sending fund. So the first one is the street fund contributing $400,000 for sidewalk projects. The park impact fee fund is an inter-fund transfer where impact fees are going to fund capital projects. The Strategic Opportunities Fund is showing the transfer coming into that fund from the general fund that we just described, and then money moving to other funds to support programs and projects. Out of that 560, however, 660, 560 is proposed to be repaid by REIT. We have that in our 2017, 18, 19, 20 plan to replenish the Strategic Opportunities Fund from real estate excise tax, because a lot of this money is being used for current sidewalk matches. In the real estate excise tax fund, these are transfers out to projects. In the Kenmore Village Fund, there's a few different things going on. The $20,000 is to correctly state the expected grant, an expected grant revenue. I had it understated in the budget. And to bring in the $900,000 from other funds for the Town Green Pavilion project. Also, we did spend $79,000 on a roof for the post office, and that had not been in the budget. Park Capital Fund, the $100,000 grant is part of that RCO grant I mentioned earlier that will be used to pay for the Squire's Landing Concept Plan. $36,000 is actually a correction of a budgeting error. And then there are some inter-fund transfers in. And then the expenditures are setting in place the various carryovers and budget amendments that we talked about earlier in the CIP discussion. Transportation Capital, very similar. It's to recognize grants that go with many of the sidewalk and 522 projects that were amended in the CIP earlier in February. And Equipment Replacement Fund, this item is to fully establish a budget to complete the implementation of the new CIGARW permitting software and development services and to fully complete that process, including conversion of historical data. $66,000 of that budget is a carryover from last year. And then the Surface Water Management Fund, again, this is a correction of a budgeting error where the inter-fund transfers in and out did not match. So to summarize, these are the final proposed amendments. The CIP would be adjusted in such a way that transportation projects over the six-year period would be increased by just over $1.7 million. Parks, $332,000. Surface water, no changes. Citywide revenue adjustments would be $6.9 million, of which $4.1 million are inter-fund transfers. And citywide expenditures would be adjusted by $9.5 million with inter-fund representing $3.6 million of that. So if approved, a formal CIP amendment ordinance and a budget amendment ordinance setting the new fund revenue and expenditure budgets will be presented for your adoption in two weeks. Other business tonight includes a modification to the 2015-2016 salary plan. Try to walk you through this without making it too confusing. We took one administrative assistant position and created a public records officer slash administrative assistant position and renamed the building permit specialist position to permit an administrative specialist and moved another administrative specialist position to that new range. And adjusted those positions, as well as the accounting tech, which was right in there too, to all be in the same band. And the increase for those positions that moved from administrative assistant up to these new titles is really only a $200 difference in the range. So.
Per month, right?
Oh, right. I'm sorry, on a monthly basis. So the attachment was in the packet. It was added separately. And I assume that you have it. And if you have any questions, let me know if I didn't explain it very well.
I want to emphasize, it's not an increase in the number of people.
No.
It's just adjusting ranges and where people are in salary ranges.
It puts three positions in one similar salary band. So with that, as a reminder, the next action on this would be on November 23rd, we'll be bringing forward an ordinance to amend the 2015-2020 capital improvement program and another ordinance to amend the 2015-2016 biennial budget. So this concludes my presentation of the public hearing on the budgets, budget amendments, and the amendments to the CIP. I'd be happy to take any questions or comments before opening the floor to public testimony. Thank you.
Any questions? Councilmember Danuski.
We had $40,000 for the Twin Springs Concept Plan for 2015. We didn't use that, did we? I don't think we used that.
Not yet.
No.
I didn't see it moved to 2016.
Because we're in a biennium, it's okay to keep it in 15.
Okay. And then is the Town Green Public Art cost rolled into the whole Town Green Fund? Is that where that is?
So I haven't identified a funding source for that piece of art yet. Couple reasons. I don't have a good fix on what that piece of art will cost. And I believe that we can probably easily find other funding sources when, once we do need to know, once we do know the cost of that project, whether we want to access the Public Art Fund itself, which has about $65,000 in it, or the general fund, or the Kenmore Village Fund balance. There's several sources we could go to. But what I'd like to do is, once we know more about what the piece will cost, I'd like to come back to you with a plan on how to pay for it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gregory.
You're welcome.
So I declare the public hearing to receive public testimony regarding 2015-2016 mid-biennial budget amendments and 2015-2020 capital improvement program CIP amendments to be opened.
There's no one signed up.
Anybody wishing to be heard? Is there anybody wishing to be heard? Anybody wishing to be heard on the 2015 and 16 mid-biennial budget amendments or the 2015-2020 capital improvement program amendments? Seeing nobody coming forward, I declare the public hearing closed. Next item. Draft road standards. Zach Richardson, Capital Projects Manager.
Your Honor, on business item, business agenda A, discussion of.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I jumped ahead.
Okay.
Yes, discussion of 2015-2016 mid-biennial budget amendments and 2015-2020 capital improvement program amendments. Ms. Gregory.
I'm available for questions or comments if you have any.
Any questions? Any comments? Councilmember Sperry.
Thank you, Mayor. My comment is, A, I'm glad we do biennial budgets. That is, I love this time of year when we don't have to go through the whole process again. And the second thing is, I really appreciate how you did the PowerPoint. I thought it was very clear what the changes are, and I think that's be beneficial for the public as well as the council.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Go ahead.
I'll continue to try and make improvements in the future.
Thank you. Any additional comments, questions? Hearing none. Thank you, Ms. Gregory. Now, getting ahead of myself here, but draft road standards presentation, Mr. Richardson and Ms. Overlyce.
Good evening, councilmembers. I actually don't have a PowerPoint for you today and hope not to take too much of your time, but in front of you, you do have our first draft of our first Kenmore road standards. It represents a lot of hours of work across many different people and departments. So we're glad to have them at this stage, but in front of you is that first draft. And you'll notice that the agenda bill also includes a revision to KMC 1250. That is just because that is the chapter where we adopted the road standards, so it has to be updated to adopt the new road standards. So the draft you have in front of you is currently under review in both the SEPA process and review with the Department of Commerce. Those are going to take us into the first couple of weeks of January before they're fully complete. And then we actually will also be having, this is not listed on the agenda bill, but we will actually be doing a public hearing as well on December 14th at that council meeting on December 14th. We'll be doing a public hearing, and I will be reaching out to the development community to make sure they're aware of these upcoming changes as well. Final adoption, I think we will probably get it to you early February for final adoption. By the time I get some of these comments incorporated in, that's about the timing I think we're looking at. In your packet, you also have attachment C, which is short, being a relative term, but a shorter version of the changes. It's still several pages long, but it can give you kind of the brief version of what we've really altered in these road standards compared to some of the older versions. And then the one item that I just wanted to bring up and have you guys take a good look at if you have a chance is the downtown improvements map. That was the one item. We kind of got some varied feedback from council as far as where exactly those downtown improvements should apply. And so you'll find that in section 206 or figure 2.1 is actually the map itself. And so I would really appreciate it if we could get any loops closed that I might have missed on my interpretation on those ones. So that would be a key thing for you to look at.
So just one small thing. I appreciate all the pretty colors, but I'm colorblind, so looking at the legend in that, it's a little bit hard for me to pick out what's going on. I mean, some are certainly obvious. Standard one, but then I start getting confused on a couple of other things, so.
Okay. I think we could do some different line types or something else that should help delineate that as well. So I'll have to talk with our GIS people about that, but we can certainly look at that.
So sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that was about it. So I'm asking if we can get all your comments in hopefully before the end of the year so that I can get them incorporated in January. Don't necessarily need them tonight, but I am here for any questions or comments that you may already have.
Councilmember Herbig.
So when we're talking about the streets going through residential areas and new developments, I remember when we talked about this last, we were talking about a design standard at about 35 miles an hour. Is that correct?
I believe so. That is still the design speed for a collector road, which is over 50 houses being served.
And what is our speed limit for a collector road?
For that, it is 35. It's the design, at least. As for the speed limit, there's some flexibility with that. I believe most of ours are 30 in the city.
Do you know?
Are collectors? I don't know.
Yes.
Because I'm, if we have collectors at 30 and if that's generally what we're aiming for, I'm still uncomfortable telling people design for faster speed than what we're going to be signing at at a later date. I know it's not a big deal, but speed does kill, and we've seen those charts. And I'd like to, I'd like us to take a look at taking the design down to 30 at least to have it consistent with what the speed limit's going to be on those streets.
And one thing that we did, which will help, is we kind of narrowed up our road cross-sections too. And by adding parking, consistent parking, and narrowing things up and having amenity zones are all great things for safety.
No, and I appreciate all of that. I just don't want us also then making curves that are a little too curvy, you know, if they're not necessary. And again, yeah, you guys have done some amazing work here, and I want to thank you for all your work you put in. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments?
I just want to make sure, did we hear consensus on that? I assume your silence meant consent.
I guess I'm not really sure what is being asked. So maybe some clarification.
So there's kind of two main things that the design speed is used for, and that is either horizontal or vertical curvature. Usually, the faster your speed, your design speed, the larger the radius, so it's a more gradual turn in order to be able to take it at a quicker speed. The same thing occurs with vertical curves and also with sight distance. So that, it's more of a driver comfort thing, and so by lowering the design speed, you can make roads slightly less comfortable to speed on is where I believe your intention was to go with, yes.
So going down this line, just because it's more comfortable and you're not dealing with a really sharp curve or you're not barely able to see, that doesn't mean that you're going to go faster. I mean, that to me, I'm not sure I can see a value in making something with a tighter curve or not having as good of sight distance.
To be honest, I'm going to probably go back to Brett, our new traffic engineer, to get his opinion on this.
That might be good, yeah, so we know more about exactly what this means. Well, because, you know, if you just take it at face value and you're saying you're designing for a certain speed, then you could just sort of, at a simplistic level, say, well, you know, we don't want people to go that fast, and they'll go that fast. And maybe having a little more background on that might be helpful.
So, I mean, right now, no formal action is requested. It's just basically to provide feedback to staff on the draft road standard presentation. But I think Councilmember Herbig touched on something in that, looking at where this is designed for, at least the map that you pointed out, there's 175th, 181st, 182nd, 68th, 73rd. I mean, if you're taking a look at what we're trying to do in that region, especially 522 to 182nd and 68th to 73rd, and even further down on 181st, you know, I certainly, 35 may be too fast, so I certainly appreciate. 35 may be too fast, so I'd certainly appreciate, you know, talking with our traffic person and seeing how we might, might address that in the future.
Again, this, this is pertaining to design speed. Like, actually, the sign is down, out here is 25 miles an hour, so there's still the flexibility in the actual speed limit set, it's just that the curvature wall and sight distance lines would all be set up for a car to safely travel at 35 miles an hour.
And this is essentially in a new development that we're, I mean, that's what we're talking about, our new roads--
Or redevelopment.
Right, yes.
Ms. Overlyce.
Oh, I just was going to say, I actually need to have a healthy conversation with our traffic engineer about how, I can't answer the question exactly how design speed relates with what you posted. That's a very good question.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we, we have inherited the speeds that we did, and we've studied them, and we've lowered many, but what the design speed is set at with an intent to set a certain speed limit, I'm not sure how that works, so I will ask him.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Versary? Or Councilmember Smith?
Oh, I was just going to say, I'm glad that this issue was brought up, because I remember when we've talked about wanting to lower speed limits, many times we were told, no, or it was mentioned that the road wasn't designed for that low of a speed limit. So this plays into exactly why it would be nice to design it at the lower standard.
I think we need to understand that relationship.
Yep.
Because if we design for 35, are we encouraging 35 indirectly?
I believe that's the concern of the--
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're sending two, we're sending a mixed message.
Exactly.
If it's open and people feel like they can drive 35 or really 40, but we have a post at 30, that sends a mixed message--
Exactly. Any other questions, comments? Councilmember Versary?
Thank you, Mayor. This is actually on a different aspect. This is to our colorful downtown improvements map, which is just after page 14 of the, of the draft. So I just had one question that, on the red sections, and that looks like that is number three, standard three, and it's saying to provide conduit for future undergrounding, I'm assuming of utilities, and I'm sure that there's some reason why those particular sections are handled that way. I was just wondering what the background is there.
That was partially an interpretation of, that was kind of one of those areas that I got some mixed feedback on, should we require undergrounding or not? And so, the idea of going with the conduits was kind of a one-foot-in idea where the actual cost of installing some conduit in the ground is typically not that expensive when you're doing a full redevelopment. It's the actual cost to pull the poles, to run the wire, to cut things, to re-patch, that kind of thing. So, it was a way to get set up for future undergrounding, but not put the extra burden of the high significant costs on those property owners.
Thank you, that helps.
Any further questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda then is West Semamish Bridge Architectural and Artistic Elements Discussion. Ms. Overlyce and John Vasenti, Capital Projects Manager.
Or maybe John.
I guess Ms. Overlyce is not part of this.
Yes, it's going to be me.
Yeah, dude.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be talking to you tonight about the West Semamish River Bridge, specifically the architectural components. First, I'd like to introduce, reintroduce Kevin Kim with Jacobs, he's our lead design engineer. And on my right here, I've got John Owen with Makers Architecture and Urban Design. He's taking the lead on the architectural portion with Jacobs. So, why are we here tonight? First of all, I want to give you a project update, kind of let you know where we're at with the project, give you a brief summary of the bridge tour that we took here last month. There are a couple of questions we'd like to get answered. One is, what kind of a bridge experience are we looking for? And also, what kind of ideas do we want to put into this architecture? Then I'll be talking about our next steps with the project, and I do want to emphasize that tonight, we're not looking for any decisions, we're just looking to get your feedback on the architectural component. So, back in April, we awarded the contract for Jacobs Engineering to start design. Since then, we've been working on the permitting component of the design, and we've discovered a few things that we didn't know about during our initial scoping, which has resulted in more permitting work that we have to do, so we're making some adjustments to our scope for that. We've also completed our geotechnical investigation, and of course, we've run into some things that we didn't expect to encounter. We've got some heat underneath the bridge there, so that's requiring us to do a site-specific seismic analysis. We weren't intending to do that in the beginning, but now we're going to have to do that. The survey's been complete, which is allowing us to start working on the actual layout of the bridge, where it's going to be, impacts to properties, that sort of thing. And then, on October 17th, we did our tour of the bridges, where most of you were able to attend, and I do appreciate you all coming out on that. It was very informative for all of us. So, the tour of the bridges, we looked at three bridges, the interurban trail bridges in City of Shoreline, the northeast 90th Street Bridge, and the York Road Bridge in City of Redmond, both of which go over the Semamish River Bridge. The Aurora pedestrian bridges go over, Aurora Avenue, one goes over 155th. This kind of showed how steel and glass and other different components of an architectural nature could be used to enhance the bridge. They were also used to enhance the design requirements for the bridge. The northeast 90th Street Bridge, we looked at, kind of gives a different look to a bridge where the bottom of the bridge had the arches as opposed to what we currently have, which is just a girder. And this bridge also kind of gives an idea of what our bridge could look like from afar, given the boat launch location. And then, the York Road, the York Road Bridge is another example of a bridge that we looked at, which is similar to what we have out there right now in terms of the concrete girder, and it also showed how you can put architectural elements on the bridge, more like a simple attachment versus something complex. So, the question we also, we have tonight are, what are our visual design objectives? Are we looking to create a gateway? Are we looking to visually link the, both the old and the new bridges? Do we want to enhance views from the water and under the bridge? Are we looking to accentuate the views from the bridge itself? Do we want something that's easily maintained? And are we looking to reflect what is special about Kenmore? Are we looking for more of a generic type of bridge? So the first part of the who is, who are we designing this bridge for? There are several groups that we could be considering for designing this bridge. We have the boaters and the other river recreation folks, we have pedestrians and bicyclists, and we also have drivers. So this is the current view of the bridge that we're looking to replace. The upper right-hand corner is the perspective roughly from the boat launch, so there's opportunities to enhance the side of the bridge. The photo on the lower left is what you see when you go under the bridge, so there's potential for opportunities with the, with the columns and possibly even with the girders themselves. The pedestrian experience on the upper left-hand corner is roughly the view from the bridge looking west, so we have the opportunity to provide viewing areas for pedestrians as they're walking across the bridge. On the lower right-hand side, we have the view from the, for the pedestrian or the bikers are going down the bridge, so there's opportunities that we could utilize with this view. Currently, our design is looking at following a similar view that we have here, where there would be a barrier separating the travel, the traffic and the pedestrian with the railing on the riverside. And then, there's the driver's perspective. On the lower left-hand side, we're heading northbound. There is potential for some sort of gateway here for looking at that, something that says, welcome to downtown Kenmore, that sort of thing. There's also the opportunity to put our wayfinding signs in this area as well, too. And then, on the upper hand corner is the view looking south, and so there's opportunities here for other types of decorative features that would blend both sides of the bridge, putting on one, put it on the other side. So right now, I'm hoping to get some feedback from you on kind of what you, how you want this bridge to be designed. Are you looking for a design for the drivers, for the bikers, for the boaters, or whatever you have?
Questions, comments? Councilmember Versary?
Well, John, I'm wondering if you could go back to that slide that showed the sort of different aspects of the design, because that might be helpful. The one that said, like, who are we designing it for? You had your little list, design objectives, I think it was. That might be helpful if we went down that list.
On this one?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry. This one here?
The, the one that you just, right before that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that one.
So, the big, the question is, is do we want to have a gateway at this location? Do we want to have the both sides visually linked, what we put on one side, we put on the other? Remember, we're tearing down one bridge, but the old bridge is still going to remain. Are we looking to enhance our views from the water, from the water view itself, under the bridge? Then, of course, there's the views from the bridge itself, looking either east or west, and then, something that's easily maintained, that's always an objective, but depending upon what we pick will depend upon whether it's easily maintained or not. And then, of course, the, the aspect of, do we want this bridge to look like it's from Kenmore, or do we want the bridge to look like it's from Washington State or the Pacific Northwest? What do we want this bridge to say?
Do you care?
Continue.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I so appreciate all your work, and I appreciated the bridge tour that we had last month. And when I got this on the agenda, I thought, you know, the one bridge I haven't really looked at carefully is this one. So I got my favorite design consultant and photographer, who happens to be my son, and we went and looked. And the first thing I did was, I looked under the bridge, because so much of this is going to be viewed from the water. I mean, we are all about getting to the water, and this is where the boats, the hand-powered water craft are going in and out, this is where the boat launch people are seeing it. And what I noticed was, the bridge that's not being replaced has a very nice, smooth underside to it. It's nice and straight, nice and flat. And I remember from our, our structure thing, that sort of the off-the-rack, I don't, I don't know how, what the term is in, in architecture, I mean, I know for clothes, off-the-rack. So anyway, the standard bridge that we would do would be a straight bridge, correct?
Yes.
And then, the, would that have the smoothness that the remaining half of the bridge, or the remaining bridge would have, or would that be something that we would have to add? In contrast to where you see all the box and the, the under, I'm not, again, I don't know what the term is. Yes, the girders, that's the word I need, girders, thank you. I don't have the right bridge vocabulary.
All right, yeah.
Well--
Thank you. Are you on?
At this point, we haven't done the, you know, the progress that much, but our initial looking at was a precast girder, which meaning the girder span will be precast offside--
Got it.
And we'll bring it to the side and just install, which has a big advantage, that we will not spend so much time working in the water, because of the working, getting, you know, proper permits and all the approval from the agency will be probably the biggest challenge in construction stage. So, for that type of, you know, the girder type, the usually straight will be the easiest and most viable option. So, we are looking, at this point, we're looking at straight bottom--
Straight, okay.
Yeah, straight bottom. But at the same time, the, each column, or pier, we call sometimes pier, would have a cast, will be constructed aside, so we'll have an opportunity to do something at each pier, so that precast elements will come from offside, and we'll just blend, make it together, so that our goal is to make that more aesthetically, you know, pleasing.
Sure.
So balancing the functionality as well as aesthetics. That is our, I mean, that is our current thought.
Right, well, as soon as we found out that the bridge with the arch was twice as much as the other, that, that made me go, let's do a nice, simple, straight bridge. The other question I had was, when I looked underneath, I could see, first of all, it looks like just the older bridge that's being replaced has, has at least one extra set of piers, I guess that's--
Many more.
Many more, yeah.
Yeah, extinct, the bridge to be replaced has a 10 piers from one point, one end to the other. The other bridge has only five, so, yeah, we'll eliminate--
So it's going to open that up.
Yes, we'll open it up quite a bit.
And then, the other thing I noticed when I was underneath was the, again, looking at the bridge that will remain, it was, instead of two piers that were separated, it was like a solid wall?
Column, yes.
Column.
Yeah, walls, I'm sorry.
So, would you anticipate, I mean, to me, it seems like opening up to the water and making it, you know, where there's a space in between or pier, is that something--
We are looking columns, instead of complete walls.
Oh, wonderful. Well, that's good news.
Yes.
That would be good. So I'm going to stop and let somebody else talk. So, so just in terms of what I saw underneath the bridge, and there is, you know, having something that has a nice, smooth underside, and where you are reducing all that extra stuff in the water and really opening up that area, I think would, 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 in a sense, create a gateway to our, the Semamish River and the water and all that. So that's, that's an aspect that I would like to see.
And I do want to add that, if you remember, on the bridge, there's all of the old wood piers that exist and the cofferdams, all that's going to be removed and taken out--
Right, yeah.
--the full length of the bridge, so that'll be cleared away as well, too.
Great, yeah, that, that was something.
Councilmember Danuski.
It's easy to give out a list of things you want when you don't have a price tag. Some things that, I guess, just initial thoughts on my part, is whatever we do for a railing on the new side, we should probably match it on the old side as well, so we don't look like we have a half of a new bridge. I would like to see the railings give you how, still have a really good view of the water, so I wouldn't want like the Shoreline Bridge where you're just looking out in little bits and pieces, that's a beautiful view from that bridge, so my personal opinion is, I'd like to be able to see it. And then, something aesthetic down below is definitely something we should do, but I don't have a strong opinion necessarily of what. And then, the other thing is just making sure that we have a good physical separation for the heads and bikes from the, from the traffic lanes. That one bridge that we went on, Redmond, felt really uncomfortable, we were all just really squished back because there wasn't just that physical--
The York Bridge.
The York Bridge, that one, yeah, yeah. So, a couple of thoughts.
Councilmember Smith.
Okay, well, thanks for being here and taking our input. I would, I'm a fan of the precast girder system that you described, because I do think directly underneath, I would say, would be the part I care the least about aesthetics. And I think you could do something really neat for the boats, maybe, you know, what's really neat is, that bridge is visually in your line of sight well before you get to it, if you're a boater, and it would be kind of cool if there was a way to add some colorful artistic element on the side that faces out, but not necessarily needed underneath, and I have no idea what that could be, but just something that sort of is a feature that people would remember. On the maintenance side and everything, I, that's one thing I absolutely would like to hope, that we could keep it as durable and easy to maintain as possible, just from a sheer operational cost perspective. I think that would be nice. And, and something that has pieces that we can replace if need to be replaced without having to have everything go through an original manufacturing process and fabrication. I could also go on for a long time, so I won't say too many more things. The wayfinding signs, I know that was mentioned, I think, John, you just mentioned that. I don't know, it, I guess that's probably something, I hadn't even thought about it until you mentioned it, because there will, there is Rota Denter Park nearby and the boat launch, and maybe someday an aquatics little center or boathouse there, so I guess that's something to at least plan for, how that might be identified. But the most important thing I would like is, I would like something on the top that really does identify it as a unique Kenmore feature. And not, doesn't have to be extravagant, but something that is something just unique to our community, and I have no idea what that would be.
Councilmember Herbig, then, Deputy Mayor. Councilmember Herbig, then, Deputy Mayor.
I think, when we're talking about boaters going underneath the bridge, we could do some, sorry, my mic is acting up. We could do some fun things, maybe just doing some, some sort of like, applications to the piers themselves, or maybe to the bottom. I don't know what that is, I don't have an artistic bone in my body. But something, or maybe something painted on in different places, I, I don't know, but something underneath there, something fun for people to see as they're kayaking or boating underneath, I think is important. I think the railing on the pedestrian side, I really enjoyed the one by 12 Acres, the very wavy. And I think something there that's memorable, that's playful, that, you know, keeps you from falling in the water, I think is important, and I think would be a nice, but also doesn't block the, the views for other users out over the water, because I know that's important to a lot of folks that are driving, although I don't think they should be staring out of their car while they're driving, but that's me. So, I'd just like to see some playfulness thrown in there, and that's, you know, in the railings, if that's underneath. And if there's any way, and I don't know how this would fit in the budget or not, but if there's any way to maybe have a, you know, a little small bump out or something for pedestrians, just to stop, be out of the way, take in the view, I think that'd be a nice addition if it's within budget, especially on, when we have the, the hydros going out there, that'd be a great place for folks to stand. So, that's my input. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
I agree with everything that's been said, but I, the two, the two bridges in Shoreline are attractive-looking as you're driving by them or under them. And, and I think we have just the opposite situation here in Kenmore, where the bulk of the traffic is on top of the bridge, the pedestrian, the bicycle, and the, and the drivers. That said, it should look nice underneath. And Nigel's, or Councilmember Herbig's comments about something interesting underneath, I mean, we could have a Kenmore troll underneath there, you know, something that would be whimsical, something different underneath the abutments on one end of it, that would be interesting. But I, I would like to see the, the superstructure of it, if we had a, you know, a Golden Gate or the, or like the Boston Bridges that are, they're freeways, you know, big, high-rise things. I don't think we want something as extravagant as that, but something that goes up rather than just a railing. I like this wavy railing on this York Street Bridge, where there's a, a pattern to it, but yet you can see through it, it doesn't block your view. The, the Aurora Bridge north, the, the one that goes across Aurora, almost looks like it's got a wall on either side with windows in it, and I think that's a little bit too obstructive. But then again, people walking across that bridge, or looking to the other end of the bridge, not off the side of it. They're not looking at the traffic, that's not the view. The view is getting over the traffic. In this case, the view is the, the river, and what's going on on the river, and the, and the beauty of that. So, I think maybe something done with, with artwork and color, maybe, and the, on the facing of the bridge as you approach it, but more of a, something up above that distinguish it, distinguishes it from just a typical concrete bridge with railings and walkways, that you see more from up above rather than down below. But you'd see that from the, from the water as well, because it would be going up from the bridge.
So, I guess I've always thought this is our opportunity to really do something and make a statement, to really create a gateway. And that's the way I've always thought about it. So, I agree that we need to have some nice visual or something. I sure don't want to do a troll under the bridge, but I'm sure that we could come up with something that was equally as attractive, that, or interesting, that would perhaps bring people here.
We don't want a tent city on there.
We don't want a tent city on there. Yes, Mr. City Manager.
Another component to this is the street lighting.
Yeah.
Right now, on that bridge, you have the utilitarian Cobra lighting. And I believe we're going to be replacing that. And this is, this could be an opportunity to, to depart from kind of the more Spartan contemporary look you have on 522, and go with a different theme, because you're kind of going into a different section of the city. So, we're going to be looking at, at lighting, or replacing those Cobra lights with something with a cool, beautiful kind of lighting, and not only just the street lighting, but also pedestrian lighting as well, along the walkway.
So, I mean, so, yeah, if we created the gateway, something that made a statement, a great gateway, I would really, I would really, that's where my interest is. And obviously, maintenance has got to be something that's easy and, and not that expensive. But we really need to, the last comment here is, reflect what is special about Kenmore. And, I mean, I certainly don't have an artistic bone in my body, but I have opinions, so. In any event, I know you guys will come back with something. Councilmember Sperry.
Thank you. You know, I think that, you know, what is it going to distinguish this bridge from all the other bridge? You know, to me, like, if you had some color, you know, our, our city color, if you will, is like turquoise or something like that, something that was different, I think that would help. The other thing, to echo what the city manager was saying about lighting, when I was walking the bridge with my son, the first thing he said was pedestrian lighting, you know, some of that low lighting that's along the path, because you can't really see where there's debris. And it's also very heavily, when there's debris on the road, it's also very heavily traveled with a bike, so that's really important. And I think I've said this before, about having, you know, we have our sort of color-changing lights going on, and having something, you know, with this beautiful reflective water underneath, and having some color-changing lights, or some interactive, you know, there's all these cool things now, when you walk by, it goes on and goes off, and all that kind of stuff. So, that might be kind of fun. One thing I do want to, I personally think I'd rather avoid, is, I have a pet peeve of when you're trying to go across the bridge, and then they put, I guess, it's been called plop art, so I'll use that term, where they put some detailed piece of art, and when you're actually going, now, sometimes, you know, go very fast across the bridge, you're stopped, so maybe that's another option. I, I don't like that, because then I always want to stop and look, and you can't. So, you know, to me, the, the view and the interest really is when you're walking, and I think Councilmember mentioned about, you know, having some viewing opportunities. I mean, to me, that's the, the, the opportunity there. And, you know, you have a real challenge, because you're building a, a new bridge next to an old bridge, and obviously, you want to make the railings and things like that match, or do something. So, have fun.
Councilmember Smith.
I want to also put in my two cents' worth in support for the, the viewing opportunity on the west side, because it does face directly west, and I've seen there's some pretty cool sunsets when you're going across the bridge. And with that, combined with the boat ramp right there, and the hydro races and everything, it really is, it's an active space that I think is an interesting viewing spot. And so, I, I do think that would be a, a neat feature.
Councilmember Herbig.
I just want to second what Councilmember Sperry said about, about lights changing colors and things like that, because that is kind of a theme that we have going, and it would be nice to extend that theme a little bit, to kind of unify the central area of Kenmore a little bit more. And, yeah, interactive would be a lot of fun, if we could figure that out, too.
So, if I can't get a fountain going 500 feet in the air like Geneva, I really want to reflect something special about Kenmore, that you're here. Anything else?
So, I, I do have a second part of the presentation that is going to get more specifically into, I guess, specific elements that you could potentially have, so I'm going to fast-forward to that. So, passing this over to John, he's going to talk more about the architectural possibilities for this bridge. Well, you'll, you'll be happy to know a lot of the comments you made, you will see slides discussing that, so.
Mayor and councilmembers, you've already given us great direction on this in a general sense, that really will help us, and help us frame some alternatives that we'll bring back to you to take a look at. And we really appreciate that. But I'd like to talk a little bit more, and a little more specifics about physical elements. And you've already made comments about those, but I'll show you some things here, and maybe they'll elicit a few more comments right after I'm done. So, we, we've already talked about some of these things. We want to have elements that fit within the bridge, that aren't just tag-ons, they're something that really is integral to the structure and to the, to the quality of the bridge. Obviously, you've already mentioned cost-effective and easy to maintain, distinctively Kenmore, exploiting its special opportunities, and we can talk a little bit about that. And then, one more thing I'd like to mention is to consider the sequence. When we go either under the bridge or across the bridge, it's not like we stop, and we have just one picture. It's like a sequence of things. And one of the things that I've always really enjoyed about the bridge, when I've gone both ways, actually, is that it changes, that, that you have this, you know, this nice, well, I'll show you some of the pictures here, you have this kind of, the nice set of poplars and other vegetation, and then it kind of opens up to your, to your city as you head northward. So, one thing we might think about is something that's not all the same all the way across the bridge, something that kind of accentuates that change and that transition. I'll talk a little bit more about that later. And then, we've all mentioned the views, which are really stunning and, and something to really play on. So, I would like to take you through just some examples, some of which you've already seen in your field trip, but just to get, mostly to pique your interest and, and see what other observations you have about some of the things that I'll show you. So, pathways, we've mentioned them already, the need for separation is really important, but also that they can be a little bit fun. There's some interesting things that, that you've seen on the, on your field trip and in other places. Some can be historic, and like you say, some of these, like the York Street Bridge, can be quite dramatic, and we could explore that option for sure. We've also talked a little bit, oops, I think I missed one here. Somehow, we lost a overlook. Anyway, the overlook is another thing. You know, you mentioned particularly looking west towards the view, having a little bulb out there would be certainly really something we could do, and providing some interpretive displays there is something we could also begin to do. Lighting, one thing we cannot do, at least my understanding is, is really spread a lot of light out in the water. It really is something that really impedes salmon migration and, and the environmental aspects of things. So, we can't do the big, gaudy things that you see down in Portland, for example. But there's a lot of things you can do, whether it's low-level lighting that spills out particularly on the, on the pedestrian way, or some other kind of fixture, elevated fixture, that is unusual or distinctive, and, and we certainly can look at that. Gateways and landings, a number of different approaches here, I've just thrown some out here for your consideration. There's a kind of dramatic structure here, like you see in the Oregon Bridge, and the goofy frogs are another way to go. You might think about a heron or something, or something that's just abstract, like you see there on the upper right. And the other example there is from Tumwater, much more, smaller. But then, the gateways and landings are something to really think about. And while we're talking primarily about the structural aspects of the bridge, the landscaping and the qualities on either end of the bridge are really important to think about. So, it's, that may not find its way into this particular project, but as you grow your city, and you are, it's really amazing, you know, coming from someone outside the city, it's really amazing the, the growth and, and development that is happening here. Thinking about how this bridge ties back into your downtown is something that you really might want to think about, and how it relates to the sidewalks and, and all the other improvements that you're, you're doing in the downtown is something that we really want to consider. You've talked a lot about structure, and one thing was already mentioned, is that the old, the newer bridge has a wall, kind of a, instead of having pole, columns, it has a wall there. And you can kind of see on the lower right there, that's an example of some, you know, a pier that actually has an archway or some kind of graceful characteristics. So, even though you might have a, a straight girder going, you know, north and south, the, piers might have some aspect, even if they're columns, for example, and that you could do something with it, would be nice. And then, finally, details and surfaces. And here's some examples that, that many of you have already seen, but there's a number of different things that add, just a little grace note, might not be perceptible to folks that are, that are driving back, back and forth quickly, but certainly for pedestrians, and, and some might be useful in terms of looking at what happens underneath the bridge, a way of treating that to add some sense of quality to it. And finally, signs. There's a number of different kind of signs that you might have. You have your interpretive signs. You could have something in the center of the, of the bridge structure there, tying the old and the new bridge structure together. In fact, your lights could be center-mounted, at least at this point, haven't found any fatal flaws. So, that's another aspect of this. So, those are just, I guess, grist for the mill, some of the things we'll be thinking about, a lot of them you've already mentioned and provided direction on, but maybe they insight any other observations of things that you prefer, don't prefer, or want to see.
Comments? Sure. Councilmember Smith.
All those poplars that are on the west side, are those all going to be gone on each side of the river with the, with, with the expansion of the new bridge?
Most likely, all of the trees on the, the side are going to go away, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
From the, in front of the boat launch, and definitely in front of the Lake Point property.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Will that allow for sort of an unimpeded view of the gravel pits, the gravel stores?
We're hoping the gravel pits eventually go away.
Yes, but I'm saying at least, well, yeah, we are talking a few years out in the future.
Yes, the, in the interim, if there, nothing happens with that parcel prior to finish of construction of the bridge, then you'll have a great view of gravel pits, yeah.
Well, that, that might argue for something that is on the far end of the bridge, it attracts your attention. Not that it's going to cover up the gravel pit, but it does make a, a statement that something that, as, as the gravel pit and other properties redevelop, and other improvements downtown occur, that it sets a standard for things that would come.
I, I think you had an example of railings that.
Yes, sir.
Were decorative, in that they had blue and, and sort of, yeah, it's those there on, on the, on the left-hand side of the screen. To me, that sort of takes away from the transparency to look out at the, at the lake and whatever, and I would really hate to see something like that. That's my own personal opinion.
Councilmember Herbig.
No, no, I think those ones work really well in Shoreline, because they're blocking your view of Aurora.
In Shoreline, probably.
Councilmember Danuski.
Is there going to be room, when the new bridge is constructed, to replant trees on the west side, or are we not going to have room?
I don't think we're quite that far yet to know what we can do on the side. A lot of it's going to depend on how much property we have to acquire, and if we're required to do any planting for our mitigation, so.
Okay.
And I think the subtle treatment of that concrete there with the, with the, kind of like the swimming fish, is certainly a lot, to my eyes, more pleasing than the big stuff on, on, on the bridge above it. Councilmember Herbig.
If we're taking out, if we're going to be taking out a bunch of trees to do this, under our own tree ordinances, are we having to replant trees anywhere to mitigate that, or?
So, I'm not familiar with our ordinances regarding the removal of trees, but we will definitely be planting some trees. We're planning on putting a rain garden of some sort to help with stormwater, and in that rain garden, we can plant trees. It really is going to depend upon how much space we have and what's required. There is the potential for doing some offsite improvement or mitigation, if we have to do that, so.
Okay, thanks.
I hope a little bit bigger than two inches.
Anybody else? Council, the Deputy Mayor.
One thing that, that puzzles me, is that we're talking about the, the west bridge, and are we limited to decor and art kinds of things on the west bridge, or is there any, are there any funds available to do a similar thing on the far side of the east bridge? Like, for example, if we have entry stanchions, like those frogs, only we had herons on them, could we put them on the outside of both bridges, rather than two of them on the southbound bridge, and nothing on the northbound bridge?
So, yes and no. A lot of it depends upon, of course, funding, how much money do we want to spend? But it also depends on what we want to put in that area. If we want to attach something to the other bridge, we have to look to see whether or not the bridge can handle those attachments. If we want to put something that's self-supported. If we want to put something that's self-supporting, then yeah, we can put it on both sides. And we're actually taking our study to include both bridges, so if we want to do something on the other bridge, we won't have to come back and redo our environmental documentation.
Yeah, I'd like to see us have an improvement of the aesthetics of the northbound bridge as we develop the southbound bridge.
One of the key considerations we've been contemplating was, as the new bridge will be a little bit higher than existing northbound bridge, you know, there'll be some visual kind of vertical, the, you know, because it will be elevated.
Right, so you've got a gap?
Yeah, yeah, there'll be some horizontal gap as well as a vertical area, new area we'll see. So John and I, you know, we will work together to somehow mitigate, you know, we don't want to just put concrete and just a big wall type as people drive to the north. We'll do something there. I think that's a great opportunity for aesthetics and some, you know, the pleasing for the travelers. So yeah, definitely that's one of the things we'll be working on.
Councilmember Sperry.
Thank you. Well, directly to that, on the concrete, the slide that you show there with the tiles and then the little fish concrete, I know at least the, those tiles were things that I personally liked. I liked that sort of organic, but with a little bit of graphic. I thought that was really nice. And then just in general, you know, you asked about, you know, what's distinctly Kenmore? Well, I think we're finally to the point of maybe having a distinctive Kenmore, you know, besides the heron. If you really look at the new development that's happening, it's all very clean, it's all very modern, and that's kind of what I'd like to see, you know, not necessarily a traditional, but almost, for lack of a better term, kind of that mid-century modern, clean look that kind of reflects new Kenmore. So that's kind of the aesthetic that makes sense to me at least.
Anybody else? Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, I'm going to come back to the trees thing. And because the bridge is so mammoth and there's so much water there, it would be really neat to replace some of those poplars with some other type of big legacy trees of some sort that really can have, that can be into scale with the bridge itself, rather than being, you know, some just standard code trees that kind of get dwarfed and you don't really notice. It would be nice to have something that over the decades really are beautiful trees.
Yeah, something that certainly lasts as long as the bridge.
One last comment. I'm really excited about this, and I really look forward to what you folks come up with, because I don't think any of us up here really know what we want, other than we want it to look distinctive, look Kenmore, and look nice.
Great, those are three good objectives, and we're very excited too. This should be a lot of fun.
You're the expert, so can't wait to see your proposals. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Thank you. You got enough sort of comments and ideas from us?
I think we have enough to go off of right now, so. So speaking of our next steps, what's going to happen is we're going to take the feedback that you gave us, and we're going to create some renderings. And then in early 2016, we're going to come back to you with those renderings to see if we've captured what you have commented on, and then from that point, we're going to kind of get your feedback on that. And then we also want to discuss what the selection process is going to be with the bridge, how do you want to decide what you pick? So food for thought, kind of thinking about how you want to make the decision, if you want to make it then, later, what have you. And then following in spring, we're going to do a public open house, the first one for this bridge, so keep that in mind as well, too. If there are any final comments.
Thank you. All right. Staff report, city manager.
Yeah, three things. You are probably aware that the commercial site development permit and transportation mitigation agreement for Lake Point expires at the end of this year, and we are working with the property owner and a potential developer on a possible extension of that agreement. City Code states that the city manager has the authority to extend that agreement. Because it's such a big deal for us and such an important project, I would like to discuss that with you at an upcoming city council meeting, date to be determined, but obviously before the year is over, because the commercial site development permit and transportation mitigation agreement expire at the end of this year. The developer or their representatives might be able to attend that meeting in which I discuss the extension with you. We haven't nailed down a date. I'm hoping for November 23rd, but stay tuned on that. Also, for the town green, we did a request for proposals for the retail portion of the community building, and that's an ongoing process. And it doesn't have a closing date for proposals to be submitted, but the first review was last Friday, and we received zero proposals. So I spoke with the broker about it, and he explained that while he has observed interest and he does expect retailers to be interested and want to propose something for the property, he also said that, number one, they're very busy, and number two, they're not used to the request for proposals process that we tend to put people through. They're more used to the more informal negotiations and coming up with a letter and, a letter of intent type of process. So we're going to regroup and rethink how we do this. We may just go with that list, that more informal listing approach. Given the timing of the town green and how we're seeing some delays in the project, we may just start fresh right after the first of the year. But again, I'll discuss it with the broker and with Debbie Bent, and get back to you on what we plan on doing. And then lastly, Puget Sound Energy, tonight you had a presentation on energy savings for small businesses, and that was really great. We're working with a different portion of Puget Sound Energy on negotiating the franchise agreement for both gas and electric utilities. And we're in contact with one of their managers there on setting up a date to start those negotiations. And we also expect them to come to a city council soon, city council meeting soon, to talk about system reliability. And we just got an email from them today suggesting November 16th or 23rd. I think it's too quick for November 16th. So it might be November 23rd when Puget Sound Energy comes and talks to us about system reliability. And there have been some interested citizens in that topic, and so we'll let them know as well when we nail down that date. And no one-on-ones this week, if that's okay with you, but if you have a pressing issue, I'm always available, I'm at your disposal. And that's all I have.
All right. Comments, reports, initiatives. Councilmember Smith?
Well, the first thing I wanted to mention is that I had a monitor going down, that if, hopefully that's not too loud for everybody. I had a meeting on Saturday with the NPRSA board, and this is the North Shore Park Service area, and I sent an email to everybody a few days ago. It's, if you had a chance to read it, great, it's, there's a lot of stuff there to read, and there's a lot of relationships to try to figure out who reports to who and what's going on. But the bottom line is, the North Shore Senior Center Board is very seriously thinking about discontinuing their relationship with Senior Services, which will be called Sound Generations after the New Year. So if you see that name, that's what it's referring to. Basically, Senior Services has a relatively new director or chairman, or I'm not sure exactly what the title is, but they have changed their relationship and their requirements. And North Shore Service, North Shore Senior Center Board believes they can do a better job, they can do it at a less cost, and still continue to provide similar services. Specifically, I asked about Kenmore Senior Center, and they said they don't anticipate that there would be any change in that relationship. Whether or not there will be, I don't know enough information about that relationship to know if there would be. But this is a pretty significant change, because they don't, right now, to the best of my knowledge, they don't have the expertise in running the human resource aspect and the administrative side of that center. And it's a three and a half million dollar annual budget, and it's a big deal what they have to do. So we've asked for more information, we've asked for some legal advice that is coming, and there's a lot that has to happen. But if anybody wants any additional information, I'd be more than happy to fill you in on it. It is, I know, kind of a confusing thing, but nonetheless, the reason I'm on the board is because we have one responsibility, which is pretty much to make sure the bond gets paid back that paid for the structures, and to make sure the structures are adequately maintained and run and operated as intended. And the bond is paid off in 2021. The senior center bond was completely paid off, and this bond, now that we're paying off for our taxpayers, is for the remaining balance on the construction of the adult daycare and health wellness center, or something like that. So that's it on that. Any questions that anybody has on that?
Yeah, so I got in a big discussion today in my monthly deal with the seniors that I do, and their board was going to vote today whether or not, because evidently Senior Services, there's some pretty onerous things that Senior Services are demanding because of the $800,000 cut that they've got because of United Way cuts. And so it just goes downhill. And that was one of the questions I had, because I know that the whole reason for the NPRSA or whatever those initials are, is that it's the bond that, for the senior center. And I asked very pointedly, can you, can North Shore Seniors pay off that? And, you know, they felt certain they could. I know that there is a request in at one point for an additional $3,000 a year in our, from our budget to the Kenmore Senior Center, but they have rescinded that, because they've looked and they've figured that they certainly have enough. And I've asked them to please get a nice financial statement together to show what the income has been from that park rental, so that we can certainly justify with our auditors, and, you know, we've got a good understanding of what the income actually is from that property. I think the city manager had talked to them about that last year, and so I was just reiterating that, you know, make sure your guys are doing it. So anyway, I know that is very, very important to them because of the changes that are happening in Senior Services, that, yeah, it's pretty concerning. I mean, those health cuts that have happened, the cuts that have happened because of United Way is mainly to food service programs throughout the senior center, the senior centers countywide. And, you know, I mean, a lot of that time, like the lunch program at senior center, it's a social event for a lot of these people, so that's the only contact they have with other people, so.
Yeah. And there was, there's been talk, we've never talked about it in a, as a formal agenda item, but there's been discussions, I can tell, that people just talking to each other about some of the ongoing maintenance that is going to be required for the senior center. And I'm talking about the Bothell one, not ours here, and it was mentioned that potentially there could be some kind of maintenance and operations bond that would go before the voters. I personally am not, that's not something I'm really jumping on board with. I think there's so much we don't know, and I really don't want to go down that path. And so that's, I just want you to know that's something I've heard talked about, and if you know any, have any information on it, feel free to pass it on.
First, Sperry.
Thank you. Did they hire the executive director for the North Shore Senior Center?
They have, they have somebody that runs, are you talking about Donette Clemens?
I don't know the name. And how long has that person been in there?
Probably two, three years.
So they did stabilize that, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and she, but if it's who I'm thinking of, she actually is technically employed by Senior Services. And so this is, it gets, it really is a very unusual or interesting, I shouldn't say it's unusual, but it's an interesting relationship and the dynamics in that they actually need our approval on the board to sever the relationship, and yet we're like one-tenth of their budget. So it's kind of interesting. Okay, so now that I've put you all to sleep, I have one other item, and this is, I would like to see the staff start serious discussions with Washington State Parks to create an agreement by which the city of Kenmore controls the uses and improvements of the current state park ballfield site, and additionally, that the city staff start pulling together the necessary data and documentation to commence SEPA for improvements to the site, and that this would be done as soon as possible. And I would request that the staff report back to the council with a status on this and the cost that it would take to move forward with this. So this is something that I know I've talked to some of you about, not everybody, but I just want to know if this is something that we can move forward with to try to do something that was basically on the books 10 years ago, funded by the city, had the RCO grant. We were well on our way to doing it in state parks, said no. There is a different commission now, and I'd like to see us do this and see what we can do.
Questions? I mean, I certainly would agree with moving forward with this. Councilmember Herbie?
And a lot of this, Councilmember Smith will recognize from our phone call earlier today. I fully support and recognize our need for more ballfields, and this is obviously a prime location for us to look at. And I support us moving forward and finding out what the costs would be and talking to the state. My concerns are in long-term, or for us, are in the, what capital improvements we'll have to make to make that field something that isn't just a marsh. And then I have questions about how we will do, you know, finding the money for maintenance operations, as well as how we're eventually going to handle scheduling, that sort of thing, because it will be well sought after by a lot of groups. And I do want to make sure that the current users, who primarily now are the cricket players, still have a fair shot at the field that they've been using for years and years and years. So other than that, I'm fully supportive of us taking this next step.
Councilmember Sperry?
Well, thank you. We are in a process now of Imagine Kenmore, and we are looking at potential projects and potential, potential park improvements. And then the second phase, obviously, is funding those park improvements. While I recognize that, you know, Councilmember Smith has been at this for a long time, and that things didn't go the way that one or two a decade ago, and it is a new season and it's a new time, I really think that the next step would be, A, first of all, we're in this Imagine Kenmore process, and really the question nobody's answered is, you know, we are looking at, in our process, we're looking at making improvements to areas of the city that Kenmore owns or controls, for lack of a better term. And the state park is a whole different situation, and, you know, if the state parks boards wants to partner with the city or create an opportunity for the city to essentially improve and spend a lot of money to make ballfields better, then I think that's a question worth asking. But the idea of directing the staff to basically make a whole plan and do all this stuff, I think that's a little premature. But I do think we need to ask the question, if that's even possible, because we are looking at projects that, you know, have citizen, the citizens desire to. We've received a lot of comments about ballfields, and I just, I have quite a few questions in terms of that, just in terms of, you know, again, is this even a possibility? So I would support asking the question in the context of the Imagine Kenmore process and developing a list of projects.
So anything else? Councilmember Danuski?
Yeah, I support going forward, I kind of see it as a two-step process, where we need to see if State Parks is open to a lease, and that's a conversation we can definitely have now. We don't need to enter into the lease. We don't need to enter into the lease. We could have the conversation of, you know, let's get this all put together. And then when we're ready and we have the funding and we're ready to do this, then we'll go do it. So I definitely support, you know, the, the looking into it as a first step, for sure.
In the preparation of the SEPA.
Yeah.
Yeah. Councilmember, I mean Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I, I see this as the preliminary steps to investigate the relationship with the state. I think that the, as was mentioned, the commission is different than it was one, eight, 10 years ago when this was visited before. The population of the city of Kenmore, I think, has changed its attitude, I think, regarding what they want done with the park. And I think now's the time to, to move on this. And the initial steps are what have been outlined by Councilmember Smith, and I'm in favor of proceeding with it.
So generally, let's see, a thumbs up then for, for moving in the, in the direction Councilmember Smith had indicated. Yep. So we've got five. Councilmember Sperry.
Quickly, we do have an opening on the library board. We have an alternate, alternate, alternate member, who name is Carol Chaput, would like to be confirmed as a regular member. So if there isn't no, if there's not any objection, then I'm going to ask the staff to put that on consent agenda so we can have that documented.
Any objections?
I can provide, I'll provide the details and send it to the city manager. Thank you.
Sure. Councilmember Herbig.
Well, I also have a minor proposal I'd like to toss out there. As we, I remember last year, we took a hard look at our salary for everybody who works for the city, made sure that they were well in line with, with our neighbors. Today, we even took a step and further tweaked it a little bit to make sure that it fit everything properly. And it's been six years since anybody's taken a look at the current council salaries. And I'm not advocating they should be higher or lower. I do think, though, that it's part of our duty to make sure that they're in line with, and that they're reasonable with what our neighbors are doing. And so I would like to ask folks who are interested in convening a salary commission to take a look at that and make some recommendations.
Is there general consensus to put together a salary commission? Okay. Let's just do a show of whatever. Yeah, that's pretty unanimous there. All right. So we'll put together a commission and have them look at it. You know, understand, as long as everybody understands, the commission is totally independent from us, from staff. Certainly we'll get help from staff, but whatever their decision is, we have to abide by state law. So if they want to zero our pay, they can. If they want to give us $1,000 a month, they can. We have to go by their decision.
And what is the, the timeline or process? Can you?
They'll move at their own speed, but I would anticipate that we would have something by the first of the year.
Oh, okay.
But they will move at their own speed. They're not under our direction.
Do you need something back for council approval to appoint them, to appoint the members of this commission?
City Attorney. I'm trying to remember how we did it last time. I think.
Yes, I'm assuming that the members who were on it before are no longer serving.
No, that was disbanded. That was disbanded.
We'll have to double check the code, but I believe the council does have to appoint the members, in which case you're going to, it'd be reasonable for you to advertise that appointments to the salary commission are being accepted.
I, I remember that last time, there, I think the council authorized the mayor to appoint and we appointed.
We'll have to check the code because I believe we have a whole chapter on the salary commission.
Okay. So if you do, would you please check because we would like to get this underway?
Yeah, we'll, we'll check into it and tell you how this is to all proceed.
Councilmember Januski.
So I've got one thing, as a citizen, not as a council member, but as you guys know, I'm.
Well, you missed citizen comment.
I know, I was kind of thinking about that. I was like, I wonder if I just walk up there.
Start the timer.
Only three minutes, darn. I am the organizer of the Kenmore Elementary Secret Santa Program and I'm looking for volunteers now. And a few of you have expressed some interest in having a child or being part of the program. I guess my question is, you could go about it two ways. We could just have people sign up to get, you know, their own child, Secret Santa child, or we could, as a council, adopt maybe one or two kids and people could pick from the list. I don't know if anybody has any strong opinions one way or another on that.
I think historically, the council has always supported one child and then each, other ones of us have, have taken additional children, so.
We usually just hand you cash and you go buy the toys. This is what we do, really. I mean, I don't know if we should put that on the record.
Yeah, I mean, but it's always worked out that we have supported one child. And then if other, other council members wants to, want to take additional child, then yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll put the mayor down for one child.
For myself, yes.
For, for yourself?
Yes.
Okay. And I'll also have you be the, the council head.
That's fine.
As well. And then if anybody else wants to have their own on top of that, you want, okay. You need, you need some little, little kid buying action? Yeah, you need to go to a toy store.
The list that you get of what?
They're really cute. Or really sad.
They are really cute.
They're somewhere in there.
And you know whether they're a boy and a girl or a girl and you know how old they are, but they're, yeah, their, their wishes are, are very interesting.
Okay, so I'll do that. And then if anybody else wanted to adopt one as well, let me know, probably by Thursday or so.
Okay.
Soon. We got to get the, there's a big process to get rid of. That's all.
Deputy Mayor.
Yes, Mayor Baker, Councilmember Herbig and myself went to the National League of Cities meeting this last week. We returned yesterday and it was a very, very interesting, productive meeting. We all attended different classes and different seminars. And the ones that I attended were more in the, in the high-tech realm on open data and making it more and more available. And the pluses and minuses of doing that with, when citizens have access to all that data and they can cherry pick from that data and, and come up with conclusions. So there needs to be some kind of publicity and all public relations that, that explain our, our situation, both financial, crime, all the backup, all of the, the open data that is available on the internet today so that it puts it all into perspective. There were other, there were examples given of where, where the open data had been cherry picked in a way that didn't really portray the, the true picture of the situation. So it's something that's really difficult to do and it's a problem that we're going to be working on for a long time to come with the, with the increase in the, in the IT capacity of cities and all sorts of institutions where you can, there's so much data that's available and the public is clamoring for it and, but what do they do with it and how do you present it in a meaningful way? So that was an interesting discussion. There was also one that I attended on public-private partnerships and the advantages and disadvantages of, of those in, in providing infrastructure in a city, whether it be roads or bridges or highway projects or buildings or whatever. That was a pretty interesting discussion as well. The one that stimulated the most interest was on the sharing economy. Uber, Lyft, Airbnb, those kinds of businesses exist within our cities and pay no taxes. They are not regulated by ordinances because they're an internet business. They're above it all. They're, they're separate from it. And there was a, a push by the participants. I haven't been in a, in a seminar where so many people got up to the microphone and had something to say about this, as there wasn't that. And so this is an emerging topic that is of interest to jurisdictions all over the country, as to how we can be proactive in this rather than totally reactive to this new economy that is, that is coming. When the dollars are not exchanged within the, within the city, they're exchanged on the internet. If you sign up for an Uber car, you request it on, on your phone, the money is withdrawn from your account and transferred to the Uber company and then down to the, to the driver and no money actually changes hands and no sales taxes collected. It's not regulated like taxis are. That's just one example. And there's going to be lots of other items in the sharing economy that are going to pose problems for cities and other jurisdictions as to how to, how to manage them. And so they have, they fit in with the rest of the economy, I guess you might say, instead of conflicting with it. So we also heard from Vice President Biden and he, I don't know how long he spoke. David said it was too long. But it was a, it was an interesting presentation by Vice President Biden. It was a half an hour, 45 minutes. And he talked about lots of stuff and, and in his, in his folksy way. It was really, it was really fun to listen to him. I was really impressed with it. In the leadership, what used to be the Leadership Institute, the educational arm of the National League of Cities, it's now National League of Cities University. And there are various kinds of educational opportunities from online presentations to, they're attempting to put programs or, or courses in with the state league meetings as well as at the national meetings. When you participate in their courses, you, you get points that, that add up after a while and you qualify for various levels of awards rewarding you for the, the education that you're seeking and so on, from bronze to silver to gold to platinum to diamond. Did I miss one in there? Well, David's been at this so long, he not only got up to diamond, but then they had to invent several levels of the diamond reward classification after that. The highest of those is dium, diamond, there's diamond, then there's diamond cum laude, then magnum cum laude, which is the highest, which is more, how many? 200 and how many hours of credits? Something like that. He's the only, there are only two individuals that have achieved this level of education in the National League of Cities University. David was awarded that top of the, the highest diamond level, whatever that is, magnum cum, magnum cum laude. Yeah, yeah. So that was, it was really special to have our mayor, you know, awarded that at the, at the meeting. So all in all, I thought it was a great meeting. The best part of any meeting like that is meeting people that you've gotten to know from other cities around the country. And you find out that, you know, they're, they've got problems in their cities just like we have. You compare notes with them, you find out how they're dealing with different kinds of things. And, and it's a learning experience from a, from a workshop and seminar standpoint, but it's really a learning experience in just communicating with your colleagues from around the country. So it was a good opportunity and I'd urge the rest of you to participate in these meetings in the future, if you can see your way clear, to do it.
Yeah, I, I think that certainly the experiences, the opportunities to meet and talk with other, other electors from other cities and share experiences and learn from each other is, is something that's, it's really valuable because what we're going through here on some of the, some of the issues that are, we think are unique to our city, they're not. Everybody's going through the same thing. And so it really helps to get different perspectives in that. So I went and was asked by the White House to participate at the American Public Health Association meeting last Monday as part of a panel for the opening president session. And that really went quite well. We, I talked about Kenmore and some of the things that we'd done and, and answered some questions and also talked about best starts, the new county program and, and how we're trying to, to do something to make sure that, that children are getting the best part possible and our, best start possible in, in, in our, in our area. National League of Cities, one of the committees I went to, or one of the things I went to was the formation, potentially of a new group dealing with harbors. And so I was sort of the representative for the small harbors because we had some people there from Los Angeles, we had some people there from Savannah, New York City. And actually, one of the, one of the LA city council members was there from San Pedro area. So it was nice to remind them that there's a number of small cities that have harbors that are the lifeblood of the communities and we can't forget them. And so we're going to make sure that if this committee is formed, that there is a place at the table for, for smaller cities too, that we can't just have the big cities. I went to a meeting on dealing with, with seniors and looking at the effects of 10,000 people a day retiring for the next 20 years or so as the boomers come through the system and really what is that going to do to the future of our labor market, the future of costs to cities? And so it's, it's all pretty, pretty interesting. Tomorrow night, I am going to be part of the Kenmore Bothell Interfaith Group, talking about 10 cities in the area. And it's, it'd just be a, a group of people in the audience and then I think some city representatives and church representatives answering questions and, and talking about what's going on in each one of their communities. I had talked about perhaps a triathlon and doing something in conjunction with Speedy Reedy next, next summer. And my wife has wanted to be the one that was sort of going to be the, the head of that to, to try to organize everything because heaven only knows, she's an organizer. She's met with the owner of Speedy Reedy and they're looking at, to start off with, a swimming event that the owner of Speedy Reedy had indicated would be really easy to put on and will draw a lot of people. And then the other thing they were looking at potentially is doing a criterion instead of jumping right into a, into a, into a triathlon to sort of work into this so it was not so much expense, not so much volunteer effort, not so much costs involved. So we're, we're, she's sort of looking at that. And the last thing is, I told you last week about the, about working with the clinic, the King County. And, and just to give you an idea of what was going on there, the totals, I think, was four patients, total of 4,010 patients, or 2,300 dental patients, 3,700 medical patients and 1,200 vision patients. The amount of dollars that each patient sort of received in the dental area was 16, 1,650,000. Medical was 974,000 and vision was 549,000. And so that's 3,175,000. And then the volunteers, the time that they gave, that they donated, if they'd had to pay for that time, was over 1,300,000. So it was a really pretty successful event. So everybody that went through, there was, the breakdown of patients was they had root canals, they had crowns, they had some denture flippers are called. And, I mean, there was teeth cleanings, there was x-rays. I mean, it was just, there were 60-some chairs on the floor of, of the, of the arena. So it was, it was quite, quite an event. So I'm glad that I, I volunteered and I think it was time well spent. So if there's nothing else, we're going to adjourn to executive session. Yeah, sure. What? That's what I was going to say. We're going to adjourn to executive session pursuant to RC43 dot twin. One, one, I, yes. And we are going to, to go into executive session for how long?
30.
30 minutes. And any potential action anticipated?
No.
No potential action is anticipated.
But five-minute break first?
Five-minute break first. So that will put us into executive session at 9:15 and we will be out at 9:45.
I'll try it one more time. Let me try it one more time.
Why have you been yours up and down?
What?
Why have you been yours up and down, please?
Ah, because I forgot to turn on.
Just turned it on.
How much, Stacy, about how much you usually want you to plan on spending for your child?
It's totally up to you. So, you'll get a letter with like three or four different items on there that the kid wants. You don't have to buy everything, you buy like maybe, you know, one or two things. And they don't put on Xboxes or anything like that, so you can get sanitized for the real expensive stuff, but 50 to 100 is in there, something like that. So, you know, like when we get, yeah, when we, well, when we get the council one, too, then, you know, people can just, oh, I'll go get that, I'll go get that part. And that way you get the experience of shopping without having to do the whole thing, too.
Let me check with Barbara.
Okay.
We do have a few grandchildren.
Well, so it's a good way to do that, if you get the council one, and then Brent's doing one, and David's doing one, and I'm doing one on our own, then like it's an opportunity for the rest of the family.
Now, it's just, it's like a true.
All right.
There are the problems.
I know, I know.
Does anyone show up as a mechanic and say, whoa, this is amazing?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, it's going, you have somebody in there, and they can't make a difference.
Exactly.
But he's right, it wouldn't work, but you'd tip it outward, and it was off.
You gotta hit the up box.
You gotta yip up, you're hitting down.
It's not gonna come over your fingers, it's not.
Mr. Cassaflo will go. Talk with that man.
At the beginning of the game, you pulled the sign, pulled out, and then I put it back down, and then brought it back up, and then it just worked, and it just pulled out.
Just started.
Just said, I was sitting here trying to figure it out, it was, you know.
No, let's make sure, no, no, don't pull it out, you have to turn it on.
And if I can, we can't pull it out until you have the power.
You can't pull it out, but there's no power. Sorry, Nigel, but at least now it's broken, and they can fix it.
I'm sorry.
Okay, we'll come on.
I can let you in.
Please, someone, please.
That was in my large block.
Yeah, I heard it.
Should I get a clear?
Put on a little bit of air.
Put on a little bit of air.
But, put on a little bit of air.
Yeah, I heard it.
She made a noise during that.
Yeah.
She was setting the test on the bridge, and I got the.
The bridge is great.
Yeah.
It keeps you from looking at the screen.
Well, exactly, that was the whole point, you know, the bridge itself had a theme, it was supposed to emulate trains, you know, that's why.
Oh, it looks worse.
And then who wants to look at a roar? I mean, so, your experience is-